I'm because I'm Chair of Administration and Finance. That was what Tom told me.
But anyway.
Okay.
Gis? Okay.
And then the both works.
Maybe that's it, they both work on.
Yeah.
Alright, you just go.
Thank you, thank you. I like it. And now we've resolved our who's running the meeting.
Power struggle.
It almost came to an arm wrestling.
I would've lost my purpose.
Yeah, the committee, the whole will come to order. Nine members are present with Alderman Lysick as Council President is excused. And I'll look for a motion for approval of the minutes as listed in our agenda. We have a motion from Alderman Vitale, a second from Alderman May. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. And item D is a presentation by the Public Works Department regarding proposed lighting, proposed street light infrastructure upgrades.
Thank you. First of all, I want to introduce to you David Young, our Electrical Superintendent. He's going to be helping with the presentation today. And with his efforts, he's the one that kind of made us aware and cognizant of this issue. Tonight, the main goal or objective is to give you some background of the electrical infrastructure, of what we are doing in the past, currently, and give you some information of some of the problems that we're kind of seeing for the future. And what we need to do to address those down the line. So with that, for information purposes only tonight, we're not asking for any type of voting, but we just want to kind of fill a little bit of the concerns that we're seeing with our electrical infrastructure and what we're encountering. So first of all, I'm going to have Dave Young review the definition page. These are some of the terms and terminology that we have in the presentation. If you have any questions, please, you know, just speak up and ask them. So go ahead, Dave.
So I'm going to talk about series circuits, high voltage, and the lights. So with series circuit, this is mostly what we have in the city right now. It's a single conductor cable that sort of runs in a loop. And we're trying to convert it to parallel circuits, which has two cables that run to each, each light fixture, which is, we consider low voltage, 120, 240, or 277, 480. And then that's mostly underground stuff. And then we're going to talk about lights, high pressures, sodiums, and low pressure sodiums. The high pressure sodiums are the white, whiter lights that you see out there right now. And the low pressure are the yellow colored lights. They're mostly on the side streets, residential areas. And the high pressure ones, you mostly see those on the main streets.
Good. So there's some samples are what the luminaries look like. But again, any questions, give us heads up during the presentation. Here on this slide, I just want to give some brief background information of our electrical infrastructure. West Dallas is one of the few communities that still maintains their electrical infrastructure, how it relates to streetlights and traffic signals, alley lights. West Dallas and Milwaukee are some of the few municipalities in the state that are larger that do utilize a high voltage electrical system for their streetlights. So a lot of smaller municipalities and some of our neighbors, they do contract through with, rent out with We Energies. Milwaukee, again, is in the process of converting their high voltage circuitry to low voltage circuitry in-house as well. So they're in the kind of the same area that we are at this time as well. At this time, high voltage, we're trying to get to low voltage circuitry. Some percent of our city from high voltage to low voltage circuitry throughout the city. So we have a lot of work to do. And that's our goal, that's our task. Of that, 290 miles of high voltage circuitry throughout the city remains. And we have to address that at some time in the future. That's our issue at this time, or one of our issues. And whenever you have high voltage, you have substations that we have to take care of. So 76 separate circuits remain, that makes up the 290 miles of circuitry to address. Here's a map. The yellow is good. Yellow is the 7%. That's the low voltage circuitry, parallel circuits. That is what has been done through the capital improvement program with Pete's department. Pete has been in the process through reconstruction of streets. And he has worked on the street lighting at that time. However, the pink, which is the remaining throughout the city, you can see there's that's 290 miles of circuitry due. Here, that's just the general timeline of events. Back in 1980, as far as we know, that's when the high voltage series circuitry took place. We used at that time pretty efficient lamps or fixtures called low pressure sodium lamps. That's going to be key. At that time, it was really good, efficient light bulbs. In 1992, we started with high pressure sodium. So we went up a little bit and we placed those throughout areas, throughout the main thoroughfares, throughout the city. Materials started to become a problem, an issue to obtain in 2001 for the high circuit type parts to maintain the street lighting. 2002 was our first conversion, when we went from high voltage to parallel or low voltage. So we started our first complete conversion at that time. 2002, we started our, implemented our own boring machine with the help of the older persons in the city. 2016, we did our first complete conversion with street lighting from high voltage to low voltage near Nashville and Oklahoma. And that substation was, again, removed from service. So that's our first substation that we could do that. In 2019, as you may recall or remember, February, we had to do that emergency purchase. So again, thank you for that as well. So some things to kind of keep track of here, from 1992 to the present, we have to maintain, if whenever we switch from high voltage to parallel or low voltage, we still have to maintain both circuits until that circuit is entirely completed. As I mentioned briefly, CIP projects was how we changed these circuits from high voltage to low voltage. And we didn't have a program in place other than replacement with Pete's staff with engineering. So that is about, hopefully, we got to think about and change or look into. So in 2019, as I mentioned previously, we had to obtain emergency purchases with low pressure sodium bulbs. Because of the low demand, the manufacturer, the lone manufacturer in the United States was no longer going to produce those. So in doing that with the assistance of yourself and finance with Peggy's staff, we did get and make that purchase available. So whenever we have the bulb purchase, and now we are seeing that the supply is not going to be there, now we have two issues. We now have an issue above ground, above grade. The bulbs, low pressure sodium, high pressure sodium, those are becoming a problem now. We cannot light up and illuminate our streetlights throughout the city. Our other problem's been a pre-existing problem for several years, and that's high voltage issue. High voltage is no longer used, as COMLing used, it's hard to maintain. So we have been with engineering's help, slowly converting those circuits underneath, underground to low voltage. So two issues, one above, lamps, fixtures, and then the circuitry below. Any questions? So with that, we had to purchase 6,000 bulbs. Dave said his staff switches those out, about 1,000 per year. And we're kind of forecasting here, in approximately year seven, a third of our streetlights are going to be dark, will not work, won't be illuminated. So after year eight or nine, we're going to see approximately 3,000 streetlights that will be inoperable. So we have to have a plan. What are we going to do within those areas? And there are some options as well, so. Here's another map with, again, kudos to our GIS IT department for creating this. You can kind of see where high pressure sodium, they tell me it's orange or red. If you're colorblind, it's a lot of dots. But usually, the high pressure sodium is on the main thoroughfares. It illuminates, it's brighter. The low pressure sodiums, which is approximately 3,000 lights, they're throughout the whole residential sections of the city. So here's another map, light blue, just indicates low pressure sodium. This is where they're stopped making and producing these, is throughout the whole city. Eight to 10 years, seven, eight years, we're going to start experiencing a blackout. Lights are not going to be operable, okay? So this is a potential areas out, it's going to be concerning with low pressure sodium lights. 2025, key date, high pressure sodium. So we have low pressure sodium, high pressure sodium. With that, the manufacturer, we're hearing that they are going to stop making those luminaries or those fixtures because the demand is just not there. A lot of people are not using the high voltage circuitry. So that is something that we just got to think about down the line. And then what are other options in the future? So Dave looked into these and looked into other option preliminary solutions, so I'll give it to Dave.
So we looked at solar powered, and within that, you have battery maintenance, you have the solar panel itself, having to keep that clean from snow and vegetation, like trees and stuff. So it's very non-practical. So we recommend not using it. It's going to be a lot of maintenance to maintain that. Then we looked at We Energies, doing it through the city. We called them up. They will not work with our electrical infrastructure. They'll come in, put their own lighting system in, probably through a contractor, and the words out of their mouth is they're, they're for profit. So they're going to have their guys, have a contractor come in, do the work, and then they're going to bill us even more just for the profit. So that was their words, so I recommend not using them. Here's a picture of our light fixtures for the low pressure sodiums. They have a transformer that can work with the high voltage series circuits. It's in the bottom left corner there, says new transformer ballast. That will convert our high voltage series to a low voltage, 120 volts coming out of it. Problem with that, it won't fit in the left-hand fixture. And in the right-hand fixture where the other ballast is, it might barely fit in there. We'll have to modify a bracket somehow to get it in there. Other than that, we have to find another option of where to put that ballast. It might fit in the bottom of the light pole. I'm not sure if it'll fit through all of our handholds so that we can slide it through the handhold, do our splices, run a new cable up to the light fixture, remove that old ballast, hook it up to the socket, and then we have to have a retrofit LED bulbs that fit in there, which isn't very practical. Or we can completely eliminate that and put in regular LED fixture in there. So those are the two options there. The ballast costs about 600 bucks a piece. The more you buy, the cheaper it gets. It could get down to like, probably $500 a piece for each of, each ballast. And then you have to buy the light fixture itself and, and the work involved in installing it.
So this would be a temporary fix for those areas that potentially could go dark. We have high voltage circuitry below. This is something by applying what they said, the transformer ballast to reduce the voltage for the LED or the streetlight that we're using. So it's an option that we can kind of have maybe one or two lights on an existing block for them, so.
Would be something more temporarily, Dave, or would be more temporary?
Yeah, more temporary. Yep, not the permanent fix.
No.
But just by its time, yep.
Yeah. So then the fact that is it will cost double then, I mean, so I don't think we want to take that route, really.
Yep.
Right.
So you're putting money into something that's not really going to be a permanent solution. Reasons to convert to low voltage, so high voltage, it is very inefficient, it is costly to maintain, requires more power. When a failure does occur during the circuit, it usually affects more residences, businesses that's on that circuit. So once we have a fault or a cut in that circuit, it affects everybody on that line or that circuit. When working with contractors on capital improvement programs, often, I guess, engineering doesn't receive a lot of bids or a lot of interest to work with high voltage. But there are contractors out there, and you just have to have the demand for that. Historically, we just put this paragraph in there, when we do replace a high voltage type system, we do save those parts and recycle them. So as we replace, maybe we can use those parts throughout the other areas of the city and prolong the lighting. Many parts are no longer available or just outdated. We can't find a manufacturer. Dave and City Roush are building, are facility superintendent, is trying to get cable, ballast, transformers. We did have to replace a transformer, did take a long period of time to get those transformers, bulbs, obviously, we have that discussion tonight, and so on and so forth, so. Benefits of converting to the desired parallel low voltage circuitry. Here, when outages do occur, it does affect a smaller area within the circuit, so you don't have the entire circuit that's affected. Safer to work with, obviously, with the 4,800 volts in comparison to 120 to 240 volts. Fewer outages would probably occur, or a smaller area is affected. So you have the potential or the perception of less crime, so to speak, when it's illuminated. Also, we look at the circuitry for troubleshooting. Whenever we have to replace parts, parallel circuitry systems won't have to depend on old parts or anything like that. With LED, it is fairly new part, luminary or fixture, up to seven, eight years, and we're not really seeing a lot of cost involved with that, so more efficient. Street lighting analyses that was done, Pete through the CIP project, received RFP from a contractor, and again, it's a small, small sample size. But on the left-hand side there, with the help with Peggy's department and engineering and Dave, with that one reply that we did get in January of this year, the one contractor to replace a full circuit from high voltage to low voltage was $685,000. We did a cost estimate as well, analyses for that work to be done in-house, and it was approximately $365,000. There, we used four positions, electricians, and we put in the benefits, the use of our new boring machines, on and so forth. So as we mentioned previously, we have 76 circuits to do. So you're looking at a total amount there of $52 million and $27 million.
And Dave, I want to interrupt you right there. You had, I think you had mentioned an important thing, that 365,467 number for city staff, that includes benefits that we're paying our employees, not just wages.
Correct.
Yeah, so that's, that's a full boat number there, of staying.
Makes sense.
And again, in fairness, the 685,000 is only one, you know, the sample sizes.
And that's in this current job market?
Correct.
Right, so like in two years, we're on the bottom of the next recession, we might get better pricing.
Correct.
We did your two other bids, confirmed that, that action was a little bit higher. In March, we got some more bids for lighting 80th Street, so. Confirm, verify that those numbers, I guess you wouldn't say that's a no liar.
But again, that's in this current market that we're in right now.
So the fact that is if we go with a bidder and an outside contractor, I mean, it's going to cost a lot more money. So the fact that is, if we start process this new lighting, so if we take an additional year, two years to doing housing, it makes sense, really.
Did you read this?
It's, it's an option out there.
It's an option, yeah.
You know, obviously, we can't do the entire city, and we're going to probably have to do some with contracted services. And do other options, like, yeah, temporary fixes and repairs and so on and so forth. So one solution, I hate to say it's probably not going to correct the issue, but just kind of work through it and just identify the problem that's out there now.
Yes, Mr. Grill.
I can reiterate or reiterate the fact that this is just information we're presenting. We're going to be working with a consulting firm that's going to come up with solutions to present to the committee going forward. So we're in no place making any decisions or presenting decisions for you to go on tonight. So that, that will come at a later portion. This is just informational at this point.
Thank you.
Oliver May.
There are a number of things. I actually got the form from Peggy and everything and read through it and tried doing a little research on this. And I think there are other ways we can save money on this as well, even if we went with a contractor. For example, there, for the same materials, their cost was higher, ours was lower. Then we'd be the supplier, they install what we buy, so that would reduce the contractor's cost. There was, like you mentioned, only the one bid, maybe two or three more, but my understanding is the specifications the city has versus what We Energies has are different. If we bid out with specifications that We Energies have, there's more contractors who are used to working with the We Energy system, PPR Power, et cetera. That might reduce cost. We went for a bid for one circuit. If we went to bid for five circuits at a time, or 10 circuits at a time, there's economies of scale there, we can get a better deal. And I've got some ideas for proposals, I don't want to get ahead of myself here, so I'll save those, but a lot of it has to do with what was put into the assumptions. And I'm not saying they're bad assumptions, I'm just saying there's, there are, looking at it, you can tell that there are other things we could consider to lower that contractor cost. And like you said, do a bit of city, contractor method going forward.
Sure, go ahead if you want. Dave, Dave, or the other Dave, you were going to say something, go ahead.
Well, go ahead.
Dave or the other Dave?
The electrical staffing responsibilities, currently what staffing has. So we have 11 positions within the electrical division that Dave's including himself. One lead electrician, we have five electricians currently on staff, one vacant position. We reclassified two positions for, to be lowered to a maintenance repairs, and one utility locate technician that was also reclassified to a lower position. Responsibilities, we just want to give you background information, it's just not changing light bulbs, outlets, that sort of thing. Cable, the wire, they have approximately 38 miles of low voltage wire that they're responsible for. 290 miles of high voltage cable as well. Conduit, and where the low voltage wire goes in, about 70 miles. Various pole boxes throughout, placed throughout the circuits. Traffic signals, you know, they're so frequent throughout the city. Anytime that they are mistimed, or they're struck by a vehicle, so on and so forth, Dave's division is responsible for that. Street light poles, again, damage or when faults occur, checking about 7,000 light poles. Alley lights, Dave's staff was instrumental in changing over the alley lights to LED last year, so they took on that project. Communication vaults, communication fiber. And then we start with the work orders that we receive from other buildings, other departments. Lloyd Road complex is fairly large, we do have a large demand there as well. So I'm just saying that we do have a staff, but we're trying to also address and help out with, with this high voltage conversion.
Dave, if you had a team that was dedicated from a tiny start in the morning to a tiny start at night, working on just that project, how many people are needed?
Right now, conservatively, at a minimum, we're saying four.
Four?
Yep. So thank you for leading me into this next slide.
Okay.
So with this, with a potential full staff of 11 individuals, our future direction is want a group, a crew of conversion. So we're going to have four individuals, two electricians, two maintenance repairs, and solely they are going to be responsible to take on a conversion of an F1 circuit through the CIP process. And their sole responsibility is going to be just that. Now, with a recent purchase, with you folks approving our boring machine, our brand-new boring machine, it's going to allow us to be more efficient and also more at larger lengths of circuit. So that's huge. Also, as Rebecca mentioned as well, there is going to be a conversion plan that Pete is working with, I believe that's KAL Engineering. So they're going to help and assist what we do have, and the Pete staff's is going to coordinate that as well. So at a later date, there's going to be not only just information here, but hopefully a plan of action or proposal. Utility marking, we usually have about 5,500 requests for Digger's Hotline throughout the city that fluctuates here and there. So we designated, we reclassified a position to solely just do that. It still requires a position and a half or so, depending on the seasonal peak period. And then we designate four individuals. So we have three electricians and one vacated at this time to handle our CIP requests, maintenance with the contractors, as well as general maintenance with city facilities and buildings, so. Maintenance work, I don't know, Dave, if you want to just?
So as far as grounds, that means we have a fault in the cable, a nick, losing power through a damaged cut. Contractors cut them all the time, so we have to go out and find those. It could be a black line that we have to look for this problem, it could be between each pole. It usually takes two electricians a day to find that problem and dig it up, repair it, and turn the circuit back on, make sure it's functioning properly. Traffic signals, we usually get, and streetlights, between the two of them, we usually get one and a half per week that gets knocked down. And that usually takes about four hours, two electricians to, two to three electricians to, to put them back together. Outages, there again, we usually find a problem in the cable. It could be up in the light fixture, in the ballast area, it could be down in the ground. Sometimes we can just bypass the pole, we can get the lights back working. It does take a lot of time, it takes a lot of resources from our guys. That's why it takes a lot of time to get stuff up and running again.
CIP work, we still are contracting out the capital improvement program through the engineering department. But we are still required to be around those construction sites to repair or do any type of modifications of our existing. to repair or do any type of modifications of our existing high voltage or low voltage circuitry that is within that street area or alley. So currently, Pete's staff department has CIP projects of about 14. So there's a potential that we just got to move staff, but there's a demand there. Going forward, as mentioned before, we're going to start with a four-person crew to start with this one circuit only, to kind of get a rough idea of the estimated time to complete. We're looking at filling those positions, three of the four are still vacated, we're working with human resources at that time, we're making some improvements to expedite that, so that's very encouraging. So hopefully, at a minimum, we're looking at one circuit per year, but again...
This can all change as we get more experienced at doing it. This is a new machine for us, we haven't gotten the people yet to operate it, we're trying to get two maintenance repairs to operate that PC equipment, so, once we get it up and running, with the new machine, I'm sure, the way we bid, we were using the older machine, it has like five-foot rods that you push through, the newer machine has 10-foot rods that we push through, so we're hoping that we can do twice as much, so.
Good. And what's happening?
Will our electricians need specialized training to do this?
There will be training provided by Vermeer, who is the manufacturer of the boring machine, so now we will have electrical training, but we're going to have other street personnel as well as fleet personnel, so we can interchange them. We're looking at daily scheduling, work schedules of probably four 10-hour days that we can work through, and then on Friday, maybe have another crew training as well. So our goal is to keep this crew going, rather than those other tasks, CIP work, so on and so forth. Yep, facilitate it. Again, at a minimum, one circuit, so maybe we could expand on that, but same to same, we could do the one circuit, so.
Mr. Chair. Yes, Alderman. Are you boring during winter?
Well, Milwaukee, last year, they ended up boring up to January, and then the cold spell kicked in, the snow. It's very difficult boring in the, when there's snow on the ground, so they were doing other things like maintenance, helping other departments out. For our department, we can use them on knockdowns, they can operate the crane, the bigger derrick, they can shovel our substations, they can help us relamp our circuits, so there's other jobs that we can keep them busy in our department, so.
Thank you.
So again, within 68 years with the portions of the street lighting, here's a timeframe, so whether the city crew or a contractor, the more you have, the more you can do, so it's just whatever the solution, help me draw him up with that consultant in June, so, and, you know, we're not saying in-house or contractor, but the more you have, the better the outcome, and the quicker. So our next steps is recruit for the current vacant positions, we're going to be training our staff with the new boring machine, wait for the CIP work plan, so Engineering has the KL Engineering, that's going to hopefully give us some recommendation, proposal for Engineering, that we can address the conversion, and with that, so. Again, as Rebecca mentioned, it's for informational purposes. We just want to highlight this concern, especially that it's expedited with the low-pressure sodium ball purchases, and once you have that, there's a low demand and a stoppage of that, it kind of creates other problems throughout, so. With that, we'll take any objections.
Yeah, Alderman. There was discussion a few months back about a cellphone company wanting to partner with us, is that still out there?
It is, and there is a manufacturer...
You want to share with us?
We've been discussing with how that would impact, again, we're using high voltage, they work with low voltage, am I stating that correctly?
Correct. I'm not sure if we're going to get any benefit from them.
The conversion...
Well, they wanted to put antennas, some sort of thing for their 5G network, correct?
Correct.
Correct. So they are going, they're looking at We Energies, obtaining energy from that circuit and to supply power for their small cell. In doing that, we could probably put a light to help illuminate that area, but going from that pole to additional poles throughout that block, we would still have to bore, you know, so it can be spread throughout the block or that circuit.
So, so they need one antenna in an area, so they'll have a meter from We Energies installed, and then they'll run the power off of that to that one light pole for their antennas. It's a special pole for them to handle their load of the antennas, and then we'll have to install the light at the end, so.
And again, it's just preliminary, and I know we're working on street lighting, but...
Mr. City Attorney.
To answer your question, Alderman, I have been talking to AT&amp;T and Verizon, who are looking to upgrade their infrastructure, and currently are, I'm reviewing a couple of master lease agreements with them that would potentially control their location of their facilities on top of city poles. In those negotiations, they've already said things like they'll be donating certain poles, and running new low voltage circuitry to those poles that they need for their systems. Now, the question is, in this process, is there a way to take advantage of it, so that when they're trenching, or when they are purchasing their equipment that they need, or the poles that we were asking to purchase, can we get both deals on buying poles, can we take advantage of the open trenching to lay our own conduit, can we tap onto the circuitry they have, can we locate their transformers in a specific location that would allow us to tap into them as well? So there's all kinds of opportunities to take advantage of that situation. The details are not going to hammer out yet, and I'm currently reviewing those agreements with the idea of bringing that forward to the council. I'd like to do it if possible, but their timing is much shorter than ours, I think, but I'd like to do it somewhat in conjunction with the study that Pete's department is doing, so that it's not two races running next to each other when they potentially could run in the same race.
And Alderman May.
When I first saw this, there were, there were two things I thought, one is $50 million is not acceptable, 2096 is not acceptable. It has to be done faster, it has to be done less expensive, and I think if, this is a much bigger logistics problem than I think we're getting out of the presentation, and I, I don't think it's on purpose or anything, but it is. I think if this is reality, we need to be thinking about changing our specifications and what those look like. We need to consider the economies of scale and what we can do with, with getting more bids and maybe more circuits done at a time, maybe having us be the buyer, we supply all the material. We need to be looking at, excuse me, we need to be looking at, if this is, if this is real and we can't afford this, we need to be looking at the possibility of turning every other light off, we need to be looking at the circuits and deciding which ones go first, replaced first, are the most needed, which ones go second. There's a lot that I think needs to go in this, and I don't think as a committee of the whole, we're going to be able to do this, and I would propose, or at least put it out there for discussion, the idea of some sort of subcommittee just to work on this issue, maybe someone from ANF, maybe someone from the Public Works, maybe another Alderman-at-Large, depending on how it works out, and then working with staff and the consultant to draw up a plan, because it's not as easy as let's wait to 2096, let's put $50 million, there is a lot of detail that has to get worked out to make this work, and I'm just curious to know what everyone else thinks on, on that idea.
There's huge ways to save money, I mean, as far as light fixtures even, there's such a broad range of costs of LEDs, I mean, we can get them from $500 to $100 difference, depends how much light you want in an area.
And that too, maybe we change how many lumens we want down the street.
Like our alley lights that we put in, they're like $100 apiece, where some of these streetlights are like $400, $500 apiece for the LEDs, so, there's a wide range of cost.
And I imagine time is of the essence.
Yeah.
And so, I think it would be better served to have a subcommittee sometime working on this, than having committee of the whole meetings every two to four weeks to try figuring it out.
Mr. Chair. Alderman Weigl.
So Dave or Dave, I'm looking at this potential timeline thing going off to 2095, does that assume that we're not doing any changes under the CIP program?
Right.
But we are, we are essentially, every time we reconstruct a street, we're rewiring it for the new system.
But we're not doing the whole circuit.
We're not doing the whole circuit, I understand that, but we're doing a part of a circuit.
Right.
Yeah, so, was that taken into account here?
And when that happens, we're maintaining two circuits.
Yeah, I understand that, you have to maintain two circuits, I understand that, so that it would make sense for us to do an entire circuit at a time.
Correct.
Or four at a time, or whatever, but, but we are nibbling away at the problem right now.
Correct, and, and we've been, we've been doing it that way.
It just seems to me, it seems to me that we redo all the city streets in 70 years anyways, about, okay, so...
Then again...
We can't wait 70 years, again, we can wait six years.
The problem is, we've been doing that, and then they resurface it, and then we don't do anything with the streetlights.
Right, if it only gets resurfaced, right, if it only gets resurfaced, we're not touching the lights typically, yeah, we definitely need to do something.
Correct.
But, and I'm with Alderman May here on...
Correct.
Streamlining the process, get a kind of a team focused on this and looking at options.
Agreed.
Yeah, I think everyone agrees, it hasn't been said, but we can't go without streetlights. Residents would be irate, realize it's a service that our residents expect, and it leads to a feeling of deterioration in a city, a city can't even keep its streetlights on, yeah, I think we're all in agreement, we got to do something. Issue is what to do.
One more question?
Yes, sir.
How many of our neighbor, neighboring communities, I'm talking about how we pay for it now, I think some of our neighboring communities have a streetlight utility, right?
I think Milwaukee does.
Yeah.
Very, very true, that's not true, nobody in Wisconsin does, other than Rice Lake or something.
Oh, okay.
But it's very popular in Minnesota. We looked at that last year at Alderman May's questions in the budget for the first $200,000, but a streetlighting utility is not out of the question, it just doesn't exist because most cities don't use their own lights, streetlighting, they use We Energies and pay those rental fees and the power fees, but we couldn't do that until we get our infrastructure upgraded.
That's either way, we have to do it. We do it.
All right, anything else properly before the committee of the whole?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Rebecca.
I'm just wondering, are you going with Alderman May's suggestion, or are you just saying, well, bring this back to the committee of the whole at the next time?
Yeah.
So, just for...
I was planning on having that discussion offline, rather than right now, but if we want to do it right now, we can, go ahead.
What I was thinking is, I'll put together, I would work with you, put together a formal proposal for vote by the council or something for the next council meeting.
And is the contractor starting?
And, well, it's starting this week, but at the end of June, we'll have a report.
So, the...
Okay, Alderman.
Is it seven?
Okay.
We should take a look at that report.
My question about that is just, because we probably want whomever's on this committee to be meeting with the contractor as they're starting to understand what the expectations are, so I don't know, we can certainly, we might be a little further along than we would want to be at that time.
Alderman Vitale.
I mean, I don't disagree with the ideas of Alderman May, but the fact of it is that if we have really good people, I mean, leading through this process, you know, and I'm sure they look for the best interest of our city, but why can't we continue at the committee of law? I mean, that way everybody would be into the same concept, you know, and we listen what the big guys are saying, you know, really, to me, I mean, to me, we should continue that directions, really. I mean, I put full trust to those people, I mean, I understand you can create a committee, you know, but what about the rest of the other five of them, you know? To me, I think we should continue to have the committee of law, the way we have been done, you know, to me, that's more appropriate, I would say.
And Alderman May, and then Ms. Grill.
Yes.
As I say, I think it's a little bit easier for staff to work with a smaller group of older persons, I would guess, I don't know if you have words in your mouth, but, and with, and report back frequently to the, to the council on what's going on, but I imagine there are small decisions and step that have to be, steps along the way that have to be made.
Mr. Chair, I would just relay the experience that we had with the Employee Benefits Committee, that was a big decision that we were making as a city going forward with employee benefits, and that seemed, having a smaller group of people and having just a select number of older people on that, was very helpful for us as a staff, to help guide us in direction, so, I haven't really talked to all the staff people here about it, but I see some heads shaking that might, they might be more comfortable working with a smaller group than that presenting to a larger group going forward.
So is there consensus among the committee of the whole to proceed with a committee? As, five members?
Add huck some guy.
Five?
Or three?
Three? I was thinking one ANF.
Could be four, or two of two from each committee. There's no voting on it.
Yeah.
Could be not, or even number.
Right, yeah.
Let's just say, I agree, and I, I'm not sure...
We can figure that out.
And then figure out the numbers within the next, you know, week or two.
Very good. Okay, very good. Anything else properly before the committee of the whole? Have a motion to adjourn?
I will adjourn.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right, we're adjourned, thanks, everybody.